I'm going to call the Dunbar Board Secrimenting Board for the.
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Yeah, you sure did. All three Secriment are present. The Town Administrator is present. In the audience, we have Mr., we have the Chief Administrator. And according for the citizens of Dunbar, we have Mr. Lee Martel. And he'll post the minutes with when the Nickus sent to you to for the citizens of Dunbar. Gentlemen, I have some minutes from last week. Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November tenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll second it. Justin, you're gonna say?
Okay.
Any discussion on these minutes?
No. I amended them, sorry.
Okay. Well written, as always. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm opening for public comment. You're on the agenda, Chief. Not going to do public comment. Bring it back to the board. All right. One thing we, one of the, we end us, we're undergoing a salary review of all departments and we did the wage review. We did the transfer station in the last, about a month and a half ago. Lean has got some data and she worked, she worked with all departments and we have the Police Chief here to talk about the Police Department. He sent us a large document, an email to us. We should have a copy of it.
You will have a copy.
Yep.
Very nice job.
Thank you.
It was helpful to see all the different towns you put in there. I know just reviewing it myself, I reviewed it right after you sent it. And the, the range of towns is really helpful.
It's, yeah, yeah.
They were very similar sized and different ones were smaller and some had some different, um, different policies. But the breakdown to me, I thought was so helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. And Lean, Lean was tremendous, working hand in hand with her to put to, she actually put together the Excel spreadsheet packet that you have in front of you.
Yeah, this one here?
Yes, yep. And I apologize for the length of my, my wage study. I wanted to try and provide as much information and data as I could, so.
I felt, sorry for the treaties you pulled.
Yeah. Blew our budget out.
I read it electronically, but I, I just thought that the, it's just gonna give us such a basis to go on.
Well, I think the biggest improvement is the fact that he's making proposals to make a six-step system. And the six-step system gives something, rather than making work exhausting, three steps and then they, we have an officer who's here at ten, twelve years and he's, uh, maxed out at his pay. He's looking around, how can I get a pay raise? Go to the next town.
May I speak to that just briefly? Um, Lean, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Um, so in, in two thousand twelve, in, in talking with Lean, we were trying to nail down the date. It was approximately two thousand twelve. The town had no step wage system in place. So, for example, when I was hired in two thousand ten, I was hired at a, a flat rate. I received COLAs and things of that nature, but in two thousand twelve, the town enacted a, a town-wide step system. So step one was upon hire, step two is three years, step three is five years. And over time, what we found, um, not, not just specific to the Police Department, but after five years, you're maxed out. So, talking with Lean, what our, our proposal is, is basically just to double that. So you would have six steps over the span of ten years. So there's a nice steady wage progression every two years. They, they know what's coming and that's in addition to whatever the COLA or CPI is for that given year. But I think that will benefit all town departments because it gives people room for some wage growth. You know, we, we have, um, prior to Officer McCollum's departure and Officer Patton's penny departure, they're both maxed out. So there's nowhere for them to go up. Um, I was maxed out as a Sergeant in two thousand eighteen. And I think moving to six steps is a, is a really good compromise to give people a chance to keep going up in, uh, in wage growth. And you'll see, it's not, the, the dollar figure isn't tremendous, but it goes up incrementally. It's a nice modest incremental increase to give people a chance.
I don't, I don't think the, the increases are excessive at all. I think they're very, they're reasonable.
Now, um, why don't we look at your charts and go through them, uh, one by one? Cause I mean, on our agenda tonight, we have some budget strategies, but this is our biggest thing, so I'd like to spend a little time on it.
Of course.
And go through it, look at the percentages and then just decide where we want to start at. And then see if those percentages make sense over those other years. I'm, I'm again like Mike, I'm good with the six steps. I just want to make sure it's something that the town can afford as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I, so what I, what I did is, um, you'll see that obviously I have the tables specific to, um, the different positions that we have.
You're gonna start on the full-time?
Yes. I'm just, uh, I apologize. Here we go. So proposed full-time patrol officer wage adjustment. You'll see we have a, we have a trainee step one and a trainee step two. And the reason for that is if we hire a non-certified officer, as the board knows, we have to send them through a considerable amount of training before they become certified. They have to go to the Police Academy, they graduate from that, they're certified, then they move to trainee step two. They're in field training for approximately, uh, twelve weeks. Um, and then after that.
In Dunbar?
In Dunbar, yep. And then they, they would move to Police Officer Step One, um, which is the equivalent of upon hire or upon certification. So to, to put that in perspective, Officer Tompkins, um, he's at Police Officer Step One right now. So he's at fifty-two, five-four-nine.
When did he go into that step?
Uh, he went into that step.
About?
Last January. He's only been with us.
Yeah.
Just, he was the academy for October, November through December, then he came on as a.
I think it was in the spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he, he was in field training for.
Where are you, where are you on your, uh, report here, Chris?
I'm starting. I'm, uh, I should have put these on this page.
It's second to the last page, Dave, on the top.
Okay, so you went past this over here?
Yes, so that, I'm on the proposal side of it. I, I'm happy to touch on where we are now.
Okay, I didn't know who was gonna go through these other ones first.
Yeah, I, I, you know what? That's, that's a good suggestion.
I just thought, you know, follow it in the.
Um, so, so I, I looked at towns contiguous to us nearby, but I looked at, uh, towns of comparable and like size throughout Merrimack County. I pulled a few towns from Rockingham County, Hillsborough County, um, Cheshire County and a few in the southern part, if you will, of Grafton County. So I really tried to find a wide subset of towns to look at. I know Lean did the same, um, with her wage study. So the forty-four, nine, five, eight, um, that's what Police Officer Trainee Step One is right now.
And I don't see any other town that low.
Right. So a few towns, I know Marlboro, um, they're approximately two thousand people, we're, we're at three thousand people. They're right around that as well and they do the same thing that we do, upon hire, if you're not certified. Top of the next page.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
But, you know, i- if you look at our wage range topping out for full-time patrol right now, it's fifty-seven, nine, three, one.
Okay, so let's go back. So you're at fifty-seven here.
And you'll see, for example, the town of Antrim.
Holderness is fifty-eight.
Yeah, Holderness is about a thousand people less than us.
Same thing with mine.
Bradford, I mean roughly half our size, their patrol officers are topping out approximately six thousand dollars more than ours. And there's, you know, Antrim, smaller than us, they're topping out at seventy-one, eight. And Antrim, you know, they follow the state police wage scale, which I found a few smaller towns do. I'm not asking for that today. But a lot of towns are moving to that model and what you'll see with these smaller towns that are offering big bucks is they're, they have very little turnover uh, because of the pay that they offer. You know, uh, Newbury, that was another one. Their population is approximately a thousand less than us. Um, that's on the next page, top of the next page. Their patrol officers are topping out at seventy-two, eight. So you can, you can kind of see the wage disparity and there's different steps and some agencies have nine steps, some have twelve, some have five. It's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, I did see that O has nine.
Yep. So there's, there's not a lot of consistency in that regard.
On the ones that have many more steps, do they have less percentage between the steps or?
It's, it's an incremental growth. It's, it's, uh, I, I didn't extrapolate what the percent increases are. But it's a, it's a nice, so like using Antrim as an example, fifty-one, four to seventy-one, eight, I think that's, that's nine steps. They follow the, the state police nine-step pay scale. So they have a nice, they have a nice steady progression that's, that's.
And you don't know the percentage is on their steps, all right?
I don't. I could, I could certainly try and figure that out. Um, but, you know, and, and, you know, Sutton. Um, I was talking with the chief up there and, and that's what they would offer if they had a new hire coming right now.
The nine steps, is it over ten or is it, um, how many years is the nine?
I think it's nine years because I, and I'm, I'm speculating, but I know with state police, when you hit ten years, you become a, um, Trooper First Class, which is a different pay grade. So I, I believe it's nine years.
Ours would be six and ten years, so we spaced several.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yep.
Can I ask a question on that step?
Please.
Discussion? How do you compensate the ones that are past step six? They're already here, ten plus years.
Well, they're gonna get a pay increase regardless.
When we look at the scales, they're gonna, if we change the scales, they'll be at a higher rate on the new scale.
Okay, so that's all, they will stay at the top step.
They'd be maxed out, but it would go up.
We're working on modifying the, the number steps with the.
That's why I was asking him, once we look at this, we're gonna go back to look at what he's proposing for the first pay. And depending on how much that goes up, then the others are gonna follow by percentage. So I want to be careful that the town can afford it when we look at, we envelope all these people through. And maybe once we pick a, um, let's say a flavor or a way we want to go tonight, then he could insert the proper numbers.
Yep.
To what we kind of semi-agreed to tonight and then come back and say, this is what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
You know, and then, um, look at that one more time and then make a harder decision.
Sure.
I think if, um, the problem that I feel that our current step wage scale has right now is there's too much time between the three steps. There's no incentive to, for someone to get in. It's a challenging job and then they realize how much they have to do. And I've gotta wait three years before I'm recognized for that next step increase. And that's the issue. And then it goes to two.
Then five years later, then you don't get any incentive to sort anything.
And then you're gone. And, or, you know.
But his is six over ten. You get more of them, but it's still a period of time.
Yeah, you're waiting two years in between steps.
But two years has been enough, three years.
It is.
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
We were trying to come up with a, with a, a step increase modification that would be fiscally sound for the town and not seeing huge jumps. But also get people money in their pocket a little bit faster because that's gonna keep people on the hook.
And depending on, on how this works at your department, maybe it's something we look at from the whole entire town as far as the.
Oh, yeah, I, I think this is the step one. We, we can implement this, but I think Lean's gonna be presenting hers and I expect something very similar to this.
Yeah, so what I have for you is a number of different departments and I've incorporated his charts into that same spreadsheet. So you can really see where Dunbar is at the bottom of the list.
And you have the same amount of towns?
I have all his towns plus all the ones that came from NHME that were, um, and I utilized the same group, which is in the lower end of the population to be similar, but then I also incorporated his, which were the budding towns to help.
So there's a lot of towns and, and, and to preface it, I mean, there's town, smaller towns than ours that pay more. And there's smaller towns that pay less. There's bigger towns than us that pay a little bit less and there's obviously bigger towns that pay a lot more. We're just trying to be more competitive. That, that's all.
I just don't want to be the bottom.
I, neither do I. And, you know, we are running into recruitment issues with certified officers because they are taking pay cuts if they're gonna come here and they can't afford to do it. We're very fortunate with our candidate now. He's at a different phase in his life where he can afford that. But what we're paying is, is quite frankly, not enough. So I'm just trying to get us to be more competitive. I'm not saying we have to be crème de la crème, the, the top of everything, but we need to be more competitive. Just the same concept with our detail rates, right? We don't want to price ourselves out, but we want to be competitive. That's, that's all. So. So that's, you know, with, with the full-time patrol officer, you'll, you'll see kind of the breakdown with, with the different towns. The Sergeant base wages, this, this one was really an eye-opener. Really, Brian's at step one right now, which is that fifty-nine, seven. Step three right now is sixty-four and you'll see that most communities are starting their sergeants at what our top sergeant step is. And there's smaller communities with less officers that a sergeant has to supervise that are making a lot more money.
Antrim's close on our starting, but they're way higher.
That's right. And, you know, Bradford's another one. They're, they're sixty-one, nine to seventy-four. So ten thousand more than us, but half our size of population.
And then Marlboro goes from fifty-six, but they jump way to seventy-nine.
Yeah. And, you know, Warner was another one. I, they have a pay scale, but, uh, their administrative secretary sent me what people are making that position now. So that, that's another example. Sutton's another one, you know, seventy-seven is what their sergeant's making right now. So it's, um, it's, it's very, very interesting to see. And, you know, Holderness is another one, thousand people less than us. Their sergeant starts a thousand dollars more than our, ours pops out at. So it's not just one, one or two like anomalies, it's like across the board for full-time patrol and sergeant. That our guys are, in my opinion, chronically underpaid. Um, through no fault of, of the board, it's just.
Time has moved on.
Over time, it's just, it's become that way.
Yeah.
Moving to the next page, um, part-time patrol officer hourly rate, it speaks for itself. I saw a post for Danbury, twelve-hundred-and-fifty people, twenty-two to twenty-five an hour for part-timers. Ours are making twenty-one-seventy-seven at max step. So the twenty-one-seventy-seven is step three. So all of our part-time officers right now are maxed out and they're making twenty-one-seventy-seven an hour. And there's communities three times as small where they're making, you know, the twenty-five an hour. So again, across the board, I found that our, our guys, um, you know, are on the lower end.
So we lost them, you know, our wage scale on the part-timers?
They do, and it depends on your certification. So if you're a full-time certified officer working part-time there, you can make that thirty dollars and change. But they have a sliding scale. Where was really, really low on their part-time hourly rate, that was kind of an outlier. But you'll see the smaller towns, um, you know, Hampton Falls, twenty-four-hundred people, twenty-seven, forty-five. And, and granted, cost of living out on the seacoast, a little bit different, commercial properties fluctuate, the, the tax rate, things of that nature. But just looking strictly at population.
I think your first sentence states what, where, I guess.
What's that?
Think your first sentence states what actually ends up happening over there.
So I think, you know, that's, that's the part-time, uh, hourly for, for patrol officers. Officer Administrator, pretty much the same thing, um, pulled from, uh, four other communities. Ours right now has popped out at twenty dollars and fifty-four cents an hour. Using Corning as an example, twenty-seven-hundred people, theirs is getting paid twenty-four eighty-one right now an hour. Newfield seventeen-hundred, twenty-five, thirty-seven an hour. So these are just a few examples that I pulled from. Moving on to the, uh, the next page. I provided this for informational purposes only. I'm, I'm not here to get myself more money. I'd really like to get more money for, for the people that work with me. But this was just kind of provided. I was told we were doing it a town-wide, so I included all of our applicable positions.
And which is.
So that, that's what I found. Some of those numbers were, were staggering to see. I was very surprised.
Maybe we shouldn't have had you help.
So I, I, you know, and we can have that conversation another day if the board would like to. My purpose of being here is to get more money for our, our patrol officers, our office administrator and sergeant.
As I said, we're doing a, a town-wide review, so I think it's included. Good, Leo, you had a comment?
Uh, common question. So in these steps, we, we tend to lose officers after a while. We have, it costs us, it costs a town money, am I correct?
Yeah.
So factor that into the loss every time and you're mu, you know, you're almost like working towards may as well give them that extra money versus losing them.
Yeah.
Because it's costing you money anyways.
I, I couldn't agree more. I, I think from a taxpayer standpoint, it makes a lot more sense to, to keep people, pay them a little bit more than to lose people, have to equip them, train them. It costs a lot more money to hire a new officer.
You already invested in that person.
That's right.
So you may as well keep them going, you know?
That's right. Yeah.
I think that speaks for all the provisions of the town. If you're gonna ask the town and, and, and limit the growth of the staffing and you want to retain those people that become experienced, that are managing your town and managing it well as a team, you have to recognize all those individuals.
Okay. So looking at the, we're onto the proposal section now. Uh, we've already touched on the steps that Lean and I came up with, the six-step, uh, progression. So circling back to the proposed full-time patrol officer wage adjustment.
Let's go to your steps first.
Sure.
Sure. Just following your proposal.
Yep, absolutely.
Step one trainee is not the same as step one completion path.
That's correct. So the trainee step one would be someone fresh off the street who has to go through, has to go through training and go through the academy.
It's almost like probation because they may not make it through the academy.
Right.
So how are you gonna fill in those dollar marks?
So, um, on the, so on the next page, um, you'll see that the, the current wage for that is forty-four, nine. And that, I, I propose an increase of, uh, nine-point-two-five percent or four-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-six dollars. Bring that up to forty-nine, four-five-four. And you'll, you'll see throughout my proposal, you have an initial big jump, but then it levels off. And I used, uh, I believe I used two-and-a-half percent, um, between, uh, the steps. That was my, my multiplier. So it's a nice steady increase up, but it's not a giant hit, uh, all at once.
So on the new wage, it starts at forty-nine, four.
Forty-nine, four.
And it goes about two-and-a-half percent going on that column?
Yep.
When they're, when they're in the field, it will go, um.
It's, I, I, so from, from trainee step two to Police Officer Step One, when they go out on the road, it's, it's a big jump. It's, it's more than the two-and-a-half.
Exactly.
But once you're at step one, two, three, four, five, six, it's two-and-a-half percent. And I did that for every, every position.
Okay, great.
Was a two-and-a-half percent multiplier. So you'll see that, the, the change on the right-hand side, that's from what it is now to what it would be. But in between, you'll see like fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-four, sixty-five. It's a, it's a, it's a nominal increase.
Could you do me a favor? When we redo this chart, could you do that percentage?
Yep, yep.
Just so the public can see it as well if we do. Um, because that's more important to me, once we set this up, that the public sees it. Now, um, looking at this bracket now, we have the range between, uh, the new range, forty-nine to sixty-five for full-time. So let's go back here. We were forty-four to fifty-seven.
Correct, yep.
And so you're topping, you're going up to sixty-five, which is, uh, eight thousand more. Uh, not really, cause it's about seven thousand more.
Yep.
See?
See?
Yeah, sixty-five, seven, yep.
So the, my thought process behind the sixty-five, I mean, you'll see, you know, the, the Marlboro, Newbury, um, Warner, Sutton, Bradford. It brings us kind of in line with that. Not as much as, as, you know, the seventy range that some of those towns are paying, but more in kind of the, the mid-range.
Compared to the lower, lower, mid, lower end.
To an extent, yeah, yeah.
So I don't think it's, um, I think your proposal is definitely not excessive.
Thank you.
Do you see that, Justin?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, good. Talk about Sergeant now.
So I, I propose, there is a, a jump, the highest jump, uh, because I, I think that position is, is underpaid for what he asked. He's second in command, um, of the agency, has a lot of responsibility and is responsible for everyone beneath him. So that would jump up to, the step one would be sixty-six, eight, and it would go up to seventy-five, five. Which again, I, I think is a modest.
Again, is it?
Good compromise.
Is that your two percent again?
Two-and-a-half percent.
Right. Your sergeant is at level three?
He's at step one right now. He's making fifty-nine, seven.
Okay.
So that would be an approximate change of seven thousand dollars.
Okay, ten thousand dollars higher for a full-time patrol officer.
It's actually eleven-five-eight-four. If you're looking at the step ten to step three of the current wage, there's a difference of eleven-thousand-five-eight-four.
I was looking between the, uh, full-time patrol officer versus the sergeant.
Okay, yep, okay.
Max and max.
So you compare it to the, uh.
Gotcha.
Right.
You compare it to the other communities that were, we're not in the high and we're not in the low, we're in the middle again.
Yeah, that's good. More competitive.
Yep.
So, and with the full-time patrol officer wage adjustment, we have three positions. Obviously, we only have one sergeant position.
And that's gonna continue most likely, right?
Yeah, yep. For part-time patrol officer, um, like I said, all of our, our part-timers are maxed out right now at twenty-one-seventy-seven an hour. So they would automatically all jump up to twenty-five, fourteen an hour, which is right in line with what most other communities are paying. Still not the highest, but not the lowest. And I think.
Oh, they wouldn't be at the twenty-three, oh, one. They'd be at the six-step?
They'd be twenty-five. Yeah, that's correct. They'd be.
Cause they're all over ten.
Right, cause you have to be consistent with the longevity.
They get a long time.
They all have ten plus years.
Not that they're ever look forward to, but they get all the money upfront.
Exactly, exactly. And then whatever the annual COLA is, we'll still give them a chance to, to go up a bit. But, I mean, for them, going from twenty-one-seventy-seven to twenty-five, fourteen, that's a, that's a, a good jump and a well-deserved jump for them. That brings that, those positions more in line with what other communities are paying for their part-time officers.
Agreed. I mean, I think that's.
And then, um, part-time office administrator, um, she's topped out right now at twenty dollars and fifty-four cents. Um, using the two-and-a-half percent multiplier, um, that would bring, um, I believe she'd be at, uh, step four, which is twenty-two, twenty-eight an hour.
I'd like to put a hold on that one because I like to compare that with, uh, the administrative personnel, this for Lean, for example. I think we should have some consistency in our administrative side.
We have a lot of information.
So things will put, uh, we, I see you, you got a good proposal here, but I wanted to make sure it matches what.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
So just though I'm thinking the same, Chris, you're saying that because with her experience, she was hired at step three, current wage.
Yep.
The increase would bring her to step eight?
Uh, it would bring her to step four. So commensurate with six years of, uh, experience, so twenty-two, twenty-eight an hour.
And that's gonna make sense with what you're proposing, Lean, as far as administrative personnel.
I think so.
Agreed, Dave?
I haven't gotten this far yet, but by working with this formula, I think I can work that into, but I need to have.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that two completely different jobs, a whole different center.
True, but the thing is, uh, it's not any, it's paperwork, it's administrative, it's answering phones, it's a similar skill set as.
You'll be able to see that in this report, Dave, that there's a lot of similarities in the ranges. But, um, on, in other towns, administrators in their position are a lot higher too.
Understood. And, uh, you know, I, I should have prefaced my presentation with this. I, uh, I, I essentially finished my twenty-twenty-three budget proposal.
Less salaries.
That's right.
Notwithstanding whatever the personnel stuff is, but between all of my contractual and my discretionary budget lines, the net increase, including the decrease in our body cam line, is approximately twenty-three-hundred bucks. And then that's it for increases. I was trying to keep it level funded because I really want to focus on these personnel, taking care of our, our personnel, uh, wage increases. So I, I didn't want to try and.
I think, cause this is a proposal at this point to our board, that we should let him keep this included in here. I'd also like to see one more graph, um, stated, even though we just did your contract for the chief's position, just so we have it documented. And then I'd like to see those percentages on your steps labeled right next to the side of them.
Okay.
And what were you saying about the chief's position?
No, in other words, you're under a, a five.
You're under a contract.
Right.
But I, I want to see a proposal here, like the rest.
Oh, okay, okay.
So do the graph out and lay it out and do the.
Okay.
We want to know where you are today.
Yep.
What the increase will look like.
Just like you did on the X.
Yeah.
Include those, uh, your, your increment increases too.
Okay, yeah.
I want to make sure it's commensurate with our peers are doing in other communities.
Right, okay, thank you.
Unless that's something that's more private, but I don't think it's content of our meetings.
Yeah, no, the thing is, it's, it's, it's all right. But the thing is, uh, if we're gonna, we're not gonna, I think it'd be prejudicial if we didn't include the chief's position.
Well, I thought, and, and I don't want to take this one out of the mix yet either, cause I know Lean's coming to us later, but this is his department proposal to us. And I want to see those percentages like that on the side over here, Mike, so we can, we can look back and see the tax rate as well. We are six steps, but they're two-and-a-half percent or two percent per year.
Right.
Or however they differ.
Every two, every two years, yeah. Yeah, I can, I can add that column in, no problem at all. I can, I can do that for a second while.
My only worry for this is that, you know, our, um, our COLA is up this year and everything's up. But I feel like we might be in a market that's gonna be dipping down shortly.
I'm, I agree with it.
A little bit worried about that.
I, I agree we should have a COLA, but the thing is, I'm not as aggressive in the COLA since we are looking at wages. I'm looking at wage increases across the board, resetting them. I like the six steps because that's gonna create some, uh, longevity opportunities for, uh, work staff. A COLA, a hot, big COLA is not gonna keep us anyone here. I think we have, developing a long-term plan is better than just a year COLA. So if I have to be a little more conservative on COLA, I'd be a little liberal, liberal and liberal with the, with the, with the long-term plan, I'd be more liberal with this plan.
I have to think that we've got to come up with some sort of balance because, you know, the voters are, put us in here to watch over the town and, uh, watch over this.
True, but.
We want to be fair to everybody and look at this. We haven't looked at it in a long time.
As a taxpayer, when I call nine-one-one, I want to have an officer that's gonna respond to me. I don't want to have to rely on state police, wait for three hours for a state policeman to come in here.
And I, you know, just trying to be competitive, trying to be, um, you know, looking at these numbers was, was really demoralizing for our guys. And again, it's through no.
Wait till you see them on here.
Through, through no fault of, of the board. And, um, it's just, I'm in a position now to advocate for them and try and get them more money and take care of them.
And I think, I think we will. I think as, uh, we're, we're, this is a great, better than a starting point. This is some real data we need.
And I think just enhance it a little bit more, include your, a breakdown with your chart on there.
Include the, the, your salary increase.
Include the 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 your salary increases that's already on contract.
Yup.
And the percentages that they want. And then do the other towns, just like you did for the other guys, so we can see what the other towns are.
Okay.
Um doing there, before you did that portion of it.
Yeah, I'll 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 just kinda use the two and a half percent, I guess, and then the the thousand dollar annual raise contingent upon the uh performance eval going along.
And save on paper, you don't need as much verbiage, we need to see the charts.
Okay.
Can I, can we go over these charts? Did did you by chance print one?
I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay, print them up, Lean, we'll go, we got time.
Um.
What charts are those?
This is every, all of his numbers in with what was available through the NHMA twenty twenty two wage study. He went a little bit further and it's very detailed, so you can see that the first position, which is his.
This is where we have this printed?
Yup, is the third to the lowest paid position in all of his titled jobs, so you can, and they're in I sorted them by high low, well, high column to the right. So you can see that the population is similar.
Oh, so you did one as well with him.
Of everything.
So I hadn't seen, I haven't seen these yet, obviously.
But this does not include any percent increase calculations, this is just what's existing today.
It's our data, yeah.
From today, so I'm gonna give you this, I'll just print another one real quick.
Okay, thank you.
That way you can follow, but if you wanted to go the first four pages of the police department.
Okay. So so Lean and I, so I did my standalone proposal, and Lean and I also worked together, she pulled some numbers from NHMA. Uh and she looked at not only police positions, but uh other town positions as well. So the first page is the police chief position, so with these towns listed, the the very top are the lowest paid, and then it goes down to the highest paid at the very bottom. Um and you can see the the population, um the salary type, and then the low and high range. And you'll see some of them, you know, some have a a range.
Oh, so you're right in the middle.
No, in the middle.
You just go like this.
Well, I'm I'm right here.
Yeah. Dave, you want a pair of glasses?
My glasses are on the ground right now.
He's he's going like this.
Yeah.
We're in the middle.
Uh so that's that's uh.
Okay.
That position, the second page, uh two of twelve, that's the adminis- police admin position. Um and again, she found towns, and then also incorporated the towns that I had researched as well, so this is kind of the the master wage document, if you will. But there's no proposed increases on here, this is just raw data of what current wages are.
Police sergeant is the next one?
Police sergeant, again, I mean, he's right where I'm at, you can see, um.
Cut the page in half, it's in the middle.
Um.
And policeman next?
Patrol officer, they're at the they're the lowest paid, um.
That's where we need to stay.
Out of all the communities.
Okay.
Um patrol officer, full time, um they're at number nine, but I will preface that with Marlboro and Hampton Falls. Um those those are those are actually higher paid, the Marlboro numbers reported to NHMA, um I had gotten the numbers directly from the chief, and the numbers are actually uh much higher. So Marlboro is forty four five up to seventy three three, as you saw in my proposal, so they're they're actually higher, they should be further down on the list.
Gotcha.
And the same with Hampton Falls, they're sixty one to sixty three right now, based on our wage study I looked at, so they're higher as well. So there's a couple communities a little bit lower than us, but um by and large, the majority are are higher paid than our full time.
So they're up in the top, on the low section of it.
Um and then I'll wait for Lee, because six starts uh other town departments now, I don't wanna speak to those without her here.
Okay. Um I as a general philosophy, I thought when it came to, she put some elected officials in here, I thought we followed the philosophy which we agreed to at the beginning of the year, Dave, that we would wait till January, if if August was coming up for election, that would be the year uh we changed the salaries. With the exception of the selectmen being once every three years. And there's other ones, there's one other board, now there's a board of three, of all elected officials, that would change every three years rather than every year. But the rest of them were the only one type elected position. How did you come up with the three years? Because uh three three members of the, in other words.
Oh, every three years each term?
Three years, yeah. And then uh for the single positions, it would be at the end of, at the beginning, before the election was announced. How many years is the road agent, one every year or?
No.
It's every three as well.
I think so.
Well, I'll have to verify that.
Sounds right.
So the thing is, uh in January, we make a, look at all the uh on a separate action. I like that we have the form, and what we should do is uh put the years there up for.
Exactly.
On the side, where you will have Lean add that.
Exactly, just write, even handwrite if she has to. And I can I can tell you our way to Lean too, that uh increasing the wages, um right now, we're we're still in the recruitment phase for our anticipated vacancy. Increasing the wages will be a huge game changer recruitment wise, um for us as well, not just retention, but recruitment as well.
And you know, I I agree with this philosophy you brought in last time, that I don't like, some of the departments are giving these one time bonuses, like up to ten grand, ten thousand dollars. What it does, what does that say to?
For new hires, yeah.
What it was up for new hires, what does that say to your existing force, which we're trying to keep? It says, hey, you've been here, have a nice day, but this guy, he's just coming up the street, why don't you give him like a ten thousand sign on bonus?
There's uh, I think Hanover's doing twenty five, Wyndham's doing twenty one, there's a uh state police is doing ten. Um it's it's unbelievable, the amount, it it's, the hiring pool is just so different than ten fifteen years ago, no one wants to do this job anymore. And um our house administrator is part of the administrative professionals group, you know, blast, everyone's having the same problem with recruitment. Everyone's competing for the same small pool of candidates, um trying to get creative with hiring and.
Lean, one of the things we wanna do is um, we went through the police department.
Yup.
But the thing is, uh as we go through the other other departments, um elected officials, if you put, can you jot down when they're next, when they're due for the election, when the next election is due?
Okay.
Cause we decided back a few weeks back to do those as the year they're up for.
Right, so monitor who's coming up for reelection and then get you the current wages.
Right, yeah.
Cause they have, they also have this information and.
No, it's good to see this information right now, right here on the side.
Yup.
Just just give me the. Another column.
Oh, for elected officials, right, I can do that.
Yeah, what is, okay, like say the road agent, he's got two more years and he's gonna be up for reelection in twenty twenty five.
Okay, that's the only group that I did not include in here yet.
We got road agents in here.
There there is, but he's, it's because that department, highway, had so many descriptions, that it was a little bit difficult, and I thought by having a little more information than just the highway worker, that it would give you.
A feel for it.
A feel of where we're at, and then yes, going forward, I.
Yeah, some of my, some of our directors of highway departments, and that's really road agents, you see what I'm saying?
Right, so there's foreman other, and it within that area, there's, you know, superintendent, road agent, rec director, highway manager, so they're not exactly the same. So then when you go to the next page, which is highway equipment, you have a a small range of individuals that call, that that give their employee a title, highway equipment, and that's the range for that particular position, but then you have highway worker for Dunbar, the next page, which is one, two, three, four, fifth from the the lowest paid, and you can see that's for the part time position, and then the uh line thirteen is our current full time employee, so you can see where they fall in the range of highway workers. So I'm not sure.
You're gonna see that Pete actually fits in the equipment operator.
Right, there's highway worker, that's where I put him in, so he probably would fit in equipment operator.
Because he can run the grader, the most difficult thing anybody on the highway runs, and he runs it.
So that's why I kind of, it would definitely department, I had to pull three different uh categories.
Yeah.
And then.
Um and yes, um.
Planning zoning administrator.
Okay.
And you can see she's on falls in line twelve, out of the category of nineteen different towns.
Okay.
Um the law, the number nineteen, though, I'm not sure if that's.
It depends, some people that hired fairly currently, they're up a little higher than.
Because of their experience.
Well, not just the experience, but it was a recent hire, so we might have adjusted the price.
Yup, yeah.
You know, before we hired that person.
Which is where she's at, she's at step two rather than step one, because she would have had to wait three full years where I knew that she was higher in her qualifications.
Bookkeeper.
And then bookkeeper, we recently established that title, changing from accounting payroll, I don't see anywhere, anywhere.
Is that old?
Yes, and currently she's at step one, and she's five in the rank of fifteen towns for where she, our rates fall.
Okay.
And then go to administrative assistant, um and then our current administrative rate falls at number six, which I believe is similar to the administrative wa- um rate wage, wage that he's established for the police department.
Exactly, no, it's it looks good.
Yeah, I think it's the same, um.
It's twenty, I think it was twenty three, twenty three and change, that I came up with.
For the.
For the new, for the existing.
The top, yeah.
No, cause you added a year, that's why, but they're only talking.
Oh, I see, yeah, 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 she's a, she's at twenty dollars and fifty four cents right now.
Right, which is right in the middle of the two, she's on step two, which is in show here, yup.
Yup, yup. Okay.
So it would fall into the same category of administrative assistant.
Okay, so your your numbers will probably be very similar here, so.
Yeah, they are, and and then the last page, last best, you can see that I'm the number two lowest in your, in my position.
We have to work on one, we have to work better.
In the, in.
Hey, first you ask. Hey, first you. Told you guys not to bump her.
And I made a point, I'm really concentrating on towns on the lower end of population, only because I wanna point out that any one of these towns still has the same responsibilities, same deadline, same communication to state level, state boards, wherever it is, and that um.
And just for the record, Dunbar was first in our budget proposal this year.
I I always strive to get the tax rates done first, and and I usually come in with the top five, this year I didn't make it at the first.
You didn't make it the first. You gotta stop guessing out though.
I'm not, I I I came in, we came in good this year though.
Okay, who are we missing off this, what what positions?
Elected officials.
Elected officials, we want that, but the thing is, the contrary of the ones that are coming up for election first, would you agree? Yeah, or or do them all.
There's not a lot of long lists, and it would be easy.
Yeah, do them all, and then and then uh put, like we said, that paragraph next to them when they're up.
Okay, and then the only one piece that's not included in here is the deputy town clerk, would she fall under the same category as a secretary?
No, it'd be um.
Because that's one in itself.
I would say make it similar to the administrative assistant.
Go to deputy town clerk.
There are.
Lots of other towns with deputy.
I can look, I can look.
Yeah, how about fire, do they?
Those are volunteers, and I haven't done that, I don't know if you want to.
We don't wanna do fire yet, only because what he's done is he started them with a minimal pay, they used to get nothing at all.
Okay.
Unless they went to a forced fire, then the state paid a minimum.
Gotcha.
So now we're paying them to go to the town functions at a minimum. Well, he had a little more in his budget than he thought, so he increased that pay one time.
Okay.
We're expecting him to slowly bring that up each year, within his budget.
Gotcha.
And so.
He still has a fair amount left.
They're way, way under anything that we're ever gonna find, is something that's never gonna be fixed overnight, right?
That that's a, that's a, that's a true cost savings to Dunbar, the volunteers that go on the fire department.
Yeah, we changed it, we changed it from stipend to a call, to number, minimum hours to a call, and to a uh hourly response.
Good.
So that they will get.
So he's slowly adding a little bit to his budget every year to a point where, you know.
But getting back to the.
They're getting some pay, you know.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Deputy town clerk versus administrative assistant, if it if it's a separate.
I'm I'll look, because that is an appointed position, so it's not category, then they're like.
No, but I I would just, it'd be either or categories, yeah.
There's a lot of information there, but.
Well, good, I'm glad to see that your proposal is in in Lean's for administrative assistants, spot on.
Okay, so do you want me to try to implement what we currently have now and do this method of two point five?
A six, a six, a six step model.
Six step model?
Um uh over a two and a half percent increase.
Yup.
After we reset the salaries, that's after the reset.
After the reset.
In other, in other words, what what you did on yours.
Well, don't confuse Chris's with hers.
No, 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 but it's the model. What, you started with the new wage, then added the two and a half percent based on the new.
Right.
But we haven't established that yet.
We haven't established that.
No, I know, but you can make a proposal.
Okay.
And uh again, we we're gonna come in with our pencils and uh shades on and figure what we gotta do.
Okay.
But the thing is, we need a starting point, such as what Chris gave us a starting point.
Mm hmm.
And I need the same from from him, in other words, put you put your best foot forward, give us a proposal.
Yup.
And we either increase it, decrease it, or make no change.
And remember, you don't have to get it all done, you know, we have some time to get this.
But but I don't wanna wait, I don't wanna wait, Dave, I I really don't wanna wait on this, because budget season's coming up, and the thing is, if we're gonna incorporate these salaries increases, they gotta be, I like to make them all effective January first, put them in the butt, put them in the proposed budget for next year, that's my goal. Agreed?
Yeah.
So there would be a salary range adjustment effective January first, and then there would be a proposed cost of living raise on the operating budget warrant?
Yes.
A combination, so it won't be the, what we're seeing today is nine percent increase.
Correct.
Because we're making an adjustment to the wage.
This is essentially a one, yeah, one time adjustment.
And then implementing the six, six steps.
Now, I I I got a gut feeling that the thing is, uh in the past, when there was a little minimal inflation, uh we used anywhere from two to three percent in the past, as you recall. I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it this year, uh since we're making adjustment, I don't wanna kill the taxpayer, we're making adjustments to the salaries. So I'm looking at, after we make those adjustments, I'm looking at maybe anywhere from four to six percent in that range.
So I do keep track of the CPIs that we approve at town meeting, and um they ranged from no increase or a medical benefit change, no bene- medical benefit change or one percent, there were a couple years that were point seven and point eight, and there's never been anything more than three percent in the last, since two thousand eight.
Agreed.
There really has not been a a.
And and uh.
That's probably why we.
Again, again, thinking thinking it through, like that there is gonna be a dip in the economy, cause it's common.
True.
You can't have um.
That's why I'm not going.
Can't go up four times in one year, three quarters of a point, and then two times at a quarter point.
In fact, the.
On these mortgage rates have gone up on a three hundred thousand dollar home, seven or eight hundred.
Right.
Dollars, even if their tax base hasn't gone up, the people with the food and the inflation out there are getting affected. So we have to be careful, cause we're doing a combination of things here, that we're we're bringing the scales up, and then we're adding more.
Right, but that.
Steps to the wage scale.
That's why I'm not going for like, uh, I'm not saying that, you know, it'd be great to have a COLA of eight or nine percent, but I'm not, I'm not advocating that at all, I'm advocating.
I'm thinking we're sticking with something close to the three percent, since we're doing all this just before.
Uh I think that's a little too low, I mean, it's a little too low for that.
Well, according to the changes in the police department, that's a nine percent increase already in adjustment, adjusting the wages.
I understood.
So then, three percent, whatever, four percent, I don't know what the board will decide, but um adjusting the the base is gonna.
You might, you might be surprised with the numbers, let the numbers do the talking.
Yeah, I'm I'm just thinking.
Say, there's a lot of speculation, I'm I'm just.
We can either bring the numbers down here, increase the COLA or vice versa. But COLA was not gonna be fixed tonight, we'll just keep that as a floating number until we see all the numbers come in. But I think it's important that we do, we have to, we have to maintain ourselves as competitive, I think it has to be done sooner than later. I think January first, I could have the implementation date for these pending budget approval by the voters. In other words, we won't, the thing is, people uh will be, how did that work with the uh last year, when we, when uh, when COLA, it was retroactive from town meeting to January first.
Correct.
We kept under the, we kept under the same salary system, then as soon as the budget was approved by the voters, it goes back retroactive and everyone got appropriate pay.
COLA, right.
So you wanna keep the wage schedule separate from the warrant, because.
Yeah, that's right.
If you're, we're doing a retro for January first for these wage scale change.
Not for wage scale change, we're doing it more for the.
Right.
COLA.
But if you wait and and, so this will get taken care of first, and then the COLA will be presented at town meeting.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
I'm not sure January um first has to be a drop dead date either.
No, but the thing is, uh.
It could be closer to our time leading date.
No, but at the same time, I think is, the departments have to have some firm numbers.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna know that in our budget process.
Right, that's why I don't wanna wait, I I don't wanna wait for December, I think this month, we have to have, by next meeting, we should be getting a little bit closer to how we wanna implement these. Uh, we're gonna get a little tightening up on the data from the police department, Lean's got the model, model to follow now, I'd say we clean it up.
What I'm saying, Mike, is, I agree with all your time praise, just slow down.
Okay.
I agree with all that, but I don't think it has to be retroactive to January.
It can be effective with the budget, I agree.
It could be, you know, we don't have to, you know, it could be a partial bud, budget this year, doesn't have to be effective January first, doesn't have to go back.
Retroactive.
You know, I know coal, we do that with typically, I think that's enough to leave, I think the rest.
It could be effective March fifteenth, the, the day we have a town meeting, that's what you're saying.
Just so there's money in the budget for what we're describing to spend for the voters, because otherwise, you would have, you know, Chris's, he might have some additional money in his budgets, and he might be able to take care of his portion of it till March. But the rest of town, we may not have the funds in there to take.
Oh, I agree.
But the thing is, when you're going before the voters, you have to anticipate and budget in those.
And we're gonna budget for it, Lean, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be a January thirty first start date.
The, the other was, the, the salary, the wage scales, the wage scales can be effective like March fifteenth.
Yeah.
Or March fourth, whatever.
Okay.
So the wage scale changes, not the cola.
And that'll actually bring down the costs a little bit.
A little bit, a little, a little bit.
Take the snap out of it.
Right.
Yeah.
The same as we do on a new hire, okay, we're looking at nine months.
We'll do July first as a start date, so it's six months of savings.
Because your initial.
You've, you've captured some of the savings along the way.
Yeah.
When someone leaves, for example, you get like three extra months.
Yeah, because that initial nine and ten percent added to the cola.
Right.
Could be a huge bump, and so to lessen that bump, we'll do it for a partial year, cause it started.
I can live with that.
Okay?
Yeah, so basically.
But we, we still wanna budget for that.
All our paperwork has to be done and in line, so everybody knows their budget, we know where we're looking, so. Remember the, the thing that I asked Chris to do is when you do your step ups. You know, show us the two or two and a half percent or whatever it is that you decide to offer us at one time.
Yeah.
And try and make it as close to something that we'll accept that first time, because it'll just be more work on yourself if you.
Yeah, no, it goes here, we tell you to come.
I'll be working, looking for a workshop.
This, this document, this document was good, because you don't wanna pick something at the very top, you wanna go for something in the, in the middle. In the center of mass, as far as wage scales, similar what, what was followed, now those, we had increases across all, all positions.
Without looking at this, knowing where we fall in the rank of our paid employees, we're at the bottom.
Exactly.
So the point is, go with the system, similar to what Chris did, increase the current rate by a certain percentage.
What Mike is saying is, bring it to the middle of the range.
Right, if you go to the top of the range, we're gonna say, no, no.
Oh, no, I'm not, I wouldn't do that, even if I did the nine percent, you're looking at increasing everybody's wages by nine percent, and then doing the, the six tier, the six or eight.
I know, but don't, don't settle yourself on a percentage, is what I'm saying, Lean.
Okay.
Yeah.
The middle of the tier might be six percent, on one job, it might be three, on another.
Or twelve percent on another.
It might be twelve on a diff, don't go by percentage.
My positions were adjusted between five and ten and a half percent, depending on the position.
Okay.
And then from there, it's just two and a half percent down the way.
As you said.
I'll work with Chris.
So just go by the position, don't go by, okay, we're bringing everybody up nine, no.
Gotcha.
Basically, you don't want to use love as like.
Right, so if they're in the middle range.
Adjusted by the dollar amount, so that you're in the middle of the range for that position.
Okay, you're bringing that position into the middle.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Don't worry about, oh, I'm trying to get six percent out of this pay.
Gotcha.
And in, in the, the two and a half percent, if you add, get a hold of this, that's what, that's twelve and a half percent wage growth from data hire to ten years. Not what's saying, so I, I use two and a half, that doesn't have to be a drop dead number.
No, but it's a palatable number.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice steady, keeps the taxpayers.
It's steady and it, it's uh, it's something that's acceptable within that.
Yeah.
Range, because otherwise.
It's not excessive.
Yeah, we'll get.
Clobbered, especially when your, your team grows, when your department grows, you're gonna.
And, and, and we're doing this when we could have a flip year or two, the economy's slowing down, so we have to really watch that. You know, when you're looking at a growth period of three or four years, you can understand that, but we're on the, we're gonna hit a.
So they say, if you believe, if you believe TV. Um, I, I think, I think it's, I, they're already.
I've been around this, I've been around these recessions many years, that's kinda.
Oh, I've been, I've been longer than you, uh, but the thing is, I, next year, they're already predicting, the, the Fed, I mean, the, they're gonna raise it another one percent. They wanna, they wanna, these pundits are saying they wanna force a recession upon us, to stop the inflation. That means people have to be laid off, or, you know, we're getting more applicants in, and people are gonna start losing their jobs, I mean, it's gonna be big time. That's what has to happen in this country, in order to stop the inflation. We're gonna force.
You're already seeing some of these big companies lay off thousands of people.
Amazon has done, has started, okay, enough said of that. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta game plan, you know how you gotta clean your data up?
Yeah.
You know.
I'll get that tomorrow morning, I'll send it back over.
Yeah, it, and.
You almost there?
Tomorrow morning's not.
Next week is no meeting, so.
I'm hot, Trump.
We're not reading next year.
I know, I know.
And Lean's are happy with it.
Dave, you're reading?
You're almost there, you're almost there.
I know, I am, I, I'm very close, but I needed to come up with facts first before I could propose anything, he had um.
No, but this is your, this is your, your, basically your bible for facts.
Yep, yep.
And then you can use that as a starting point.
That being said, I know it's a little bit premature for a budget strategy, but excluding the payroll lines, do, I've got the budget reports ready.
Level budget on the.
I'm ready to disperse all the budget reports to departments, they work very well, everybody.
Yeah.
Seems to use them, and we've gone through our budgets.
You're going to do the same thing you've done the prior year.
No, but the thing is, I, 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 I expect to have increases in fuel, anything that uses fuel, and I expect to have increases compared to la, January of last year. I expect significant, I expect budget more for fuel costs.
Well, I don't, I'll leave it in there.
Let them do their job.
Yeah, but, but don't say a level budget, level budget.
No, no, level services.
Level services.
How we use it, meaning, don't come to us for another employee, or this, or that, or whatever.
Right.
I like the level budget.
Issue a few sweaters for people working the office.
Yeah, for the heat down.
I, I thought it would be cold here, this is warmer than my house, I just, I just stay here.
He's nice in there, might take a nap.
So you're.
This is gonna change.
Alright, so you're okay with me just sending out the budget reports, ask them to work on the line items excluding the.
Right, but pay careful attention to fuel and heating costs, for example, because.
Well, we've got additional costs for new lines, for cell phones, and there's always the um.
Right, a little bit of rental. Okay, but as Dave said, level services, uh, we're not expanding services per se, yet.
You know, the departments can come to us and ask us, and, and we'll see how, there are some departments that are gonna have growth, like the fire department we talked about, and there's.
We anticipate that, yeah.
So they're getting clobbered.
Um, so you know, some of this stuff's gonna come to us full, and hopefully, we can take it at department at a time per year, and not get every department, so. Kind of spread it out through the years.
Just for FYI, the thing is, uh, when it comes to, we, we looked at the transfer station already, and I've been thinking about, you know, I don't think we've ever kept employee more than six years of the transfer station.
Would he?
No, I, I, I let him aside, but I'm talking about the part timers.
Um, Brad Jobel was there for twenty years.
Brad was there for twenty years.
Eighteen.
Okay, and I mean, I'll hold.
Was he real?
Alright.
Really?
Okay, but the thing is, uh, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not.
What, was he born down there? Bad, isn't it?
Okay, but we'll look at, we'll look, we've already addressed that wages wise.
Yeah.
And the thing is, uh, I don't see there's an urgency to address that right now. As, I don't want Lean to spend her time on that at this point.
Well, the only thing I, I would like to do is add the three more steps to that.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but.
Add the two or two and a half percent.
Right.
Whenever you decide to come to us, and then, if we say Lean, bring these all down to one and a half percent.
Well, this, if you don't wanna take this home, I can send it to you electronically, you can leave it in your basket.
Yeah, this is good.
Okay, but I think it's important for you to have this here, so you can see where it was that I worked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the position.
It's good work.
No, we like that as well, but so I'm saying for the, as far as the transfer station, the base pay has already been set, cause we've done that part. And the first step increase have already been set, so now, go through the other steps.
Steps, and then determine which.
If we're gonna do a six step system.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Well, that'll be encouraging for the um, ones that have been moved into step two, that next year, that will.
They don't wanna have to wait three years, they'll get it in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it two years, every two years?
Every two years.
Okay.
Yeah, zero, two, four, six, eight, time.
Yeah, that, that's actually incentive for them. Alright, um, I think we're done with that portion of the meeting.
Thank you for the force of time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for that.
Report to us really smart.
Read, so.
Thank you. And Lean was outstanding, we, we worked really well together, getting everything ready, and, so, thank you, Lean.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's keep going on, we got mailbox items to go through. Okay. We've already got a, a request for um, for Margaret Watkins, she got a request for the Dunbar and Bold steps, pub master, to use the uh, the upstairs, and every Wednesday, every month for pack meetings, we don't even have, the building is not, the project's not done yet. The elevator, I understand, is gonna take a couple of months to get the certificate, so it can be used, I'm not signing up anyone at this point.
Yeah, I think, wait till we sign the policy and just throw it off, cause uh. I don't wanna have any one, one committee starting before next, it's gonna.
Yeah, forget the first request, I asked first.
But send, send a, a, a response back, please.
I mean, I don't, we have to compare it to the library hours and all that, to, I don't even know the library hours on the Wednesday before we respond to that, you know?
Okay, good point, very good point.
Okay, um, we gotta, uh.
So we're gonna shelf that for now.
Absolutely.
Tell them we'll keep it in the queue, and we'll.
Yep, yeah.
Next item is, we got an item from uh, the fuel tanks, the, to be uh, I, concrete off with some concrete uh, spill containment area.
Don't say the.
Say again.
Don't say the amount.
No, I'm not gonna say the amount, uh, we got one, we got a, I guess, is it gonna alphabet, or what's the story?
Well, what I understood from talking with Jeff just quickly, when I stopped in to sign the checks, was, um, there was some uh, concern about how the proposal was, um, the, the person that did the proposal was also taking care of all the earthwork around the cement pad with the spill containment.
Okay.
And Jeff said, you know, he didn't ask him to do that, it was just something he put in the bid, so, he thinks that the bid's gonna come down substantially, and Jeff's also gonna um.
Is he working on it?
He's, he's working, and I also gave him the name from the people that did our steps out to the concrete work.
That's a great idea, okay.
So they were a great company, I'm not sure that they do this, I know they do the slab work all the time, but I'm not sure if they do the um.
They could know grooves.
Yeah, so this was a um, a requirement based on the inspection of the tanks, not this recent one. So I'll go back to that report and see.
So it'll be something that once he gets proper budgets or proposals, we'll put it in his next year budget.
Absolutely, okay.
Alright, so we should work on that.
Or make it part of our maintenance budget as well. Yeah, I see.
Okay, good, alright, next item, uh. Hyper electric, this is for, what's this for, Lean?
That particular quote, I had reached out to three um, electricians, only received one return call. That gentleman finally showed up at the office after a few days, um, he um, went through the different buildings, and this and quote is based on the um, Department of Labor safety requirements that is mandated, there's two in the basement. Yeah, exits is lit, exit signs, there's two or three.
Couple in the library.
Two or three in the, in the fire department, two in the, in, in minimum, in the library. There's two in the highway, and then I guess this exit sign on here doesn't pass, it's a, it's a sign.
It's not lit probably, right?
No, it's just a sign on the wall, so I have three in my office that I need to put, so.
So the question is, um, I have enough maintenance money this year, I can encumber that towards the end of the year for this budget. I'd rather keep, keep my powder dry for another couple of weeks until we get.
But they sent a wide idea to see how this all.
Exactly.
Notice some controversy on that exit sign, cause I brought that up with Wiggins, did we ever clarify that?
We did, and um, he gave me an RSA that says basically, as soon as you put a space, a room, that um, is, houses a, a meeting room, it changes the whole code, and he said that he was incorrect in his statement, so.
So it needs to be done.
Needs to be done.
Okay, so.
Now, um.
You see the amount there, that's on.
But I'm, I'm looking at the amount, but then I'm looking at the, um, like, the first one on the town office, you're installing three.
Yeah.
And then you don't divide that number by three to do the next two, so it's kind of a little odd.
Well, this one here requires electrical, the others only need remove.
Boxes.
Um.
Field boxes.
Security lights, and then replace them with lit exit signs combo.
Okay.
So that's the difference between those, there are a few in the buildings that need electrical work, like the police department.
And I think we, like Mike said, with the time here, maybe we hear back from one of those other ones.
I'll, I'll give him a call, he'll keep handling them.
And, and then we can encumber it this year in December.
Okay.
We agree, cause I'd rather keep a little bit of money, I don't wanna go bankrupt. For the record, it's not bankrupt, I don't wanna run out of money, budget money this year, which we budgeted, we were slim pickings when it come to, uh, some of the maintenance line, and we had a lot of maintenance items this year. And I wanna keep my uh, maintenance line in case we have a catastrophe, and I'll give you a catastrophe example, alright? This past week, the fire department had lost some shingles, and uh.
Some metal roofing.
Metal roofing, and I asked.
Take a look at that tape?
Well, I asked Lean, I think is, I'm concerned, I just want it weather tight for the winter, because it's gonna need some roof, roofing work next year. I don't want a roofing job, but I want it weather tight for the winter, and I, she reached out to one contractor in Dunbar to get some estimate on it, because uh.
Did you hear anything back yet?
He said he would, he responded he would get somebody out there the following day, and then the day after that, it poured.
Yeah, poured.
But um, I haven't heard from John, so I worked from home yesterday all day to work on these numbers.
You know, I'll have some time tomorrow.
You may have already taken care of it, but I haven't not.
But I'll reach out to John also, but my, my, my worry, and I, I said this to Lean, is, cause that building was done in the forties, the configuration of the roofing is no longer available from what I've seen in commercial roofing, so, getting a patch to put on, it's not as easy as it sounds, because um, it's not gonna match the layout of it, so. I wanna see what these guys, and we might end up having to do something like that, I'm not sure.
I just want, again, weather tight, so it doesn't cause damage over the winter, that's what she was looking for. And the thing is, uh, Lean just, uh, but, that's, that's why I'm.
There may be some overlay sheets that don't match the current configuration, just for a temporary patch.
Yeah.
That's, that's the example I was trying to portray, as, as we need money for urgencies that may come up in the next six weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
Exit signs can be done next year for the afternoon.
Yeah, and I did, in my report to the state, asked for an extension for the purpose of funding.
Okay, it's this time of the year for our memberships at NHMA. Do we wanna continue using that, Lean?
Oh, yes, we have to.
Okay.
Agreed.
Uh, we have no say in the say so of the budget, so make it, uh.
It's based on per capita, so that's.
That's uh, did you see that, Dave?
Yeah, you have that in your budget.
Every year I do. It's gone up very slightly every year.
Okay, so Lean.
Yeah.
Consensus gentleman.
Keep you informed, that would be one of my slight increases.
Okay, we have a uh, quick claim deed, explain what that is for us.
Okay, in front of you, you have a quick claim deed that should have been recorded back in two thousand and nine. The deed itself was not ever recorded, and I think the owners are looking to uh, clean up their estate, and wanna make sure that there's not gonna be any issues.
Can I read it?
Sure.
Um, so there's three pages to that quick claim.
That, that's, it's tied, just signatures, that's all in the first page.
So the plan was um, to take a very small area, probably fifty by fifty, that was located in front of the house, and move it directly to the end of the road, and so where the, the town was already using in front of the house, theoretically, they had the easement ownership of that, where they turned into that area for very many, many years, so when this individual went before the planning board, um, he requested a
You know where that is?
Modification on the plan. So if you look at So if you look at. This one here, this is where we used to turn around, this is where we now turn around, because they've given us, this, this is their land, this is our land. Cause this is the, the town used to turn in, used to maintain the road. And now they've given us this piece, but they want us to distinguish or a dis- discontinue use on this one. So now it looks like this, just goes straight and there's no more.
What's the planning board recommendation?
Two thousand and nine, they approved it, the deed never, the deed never got recorded, so they're just cleaning up their records. And it's basically.
Who uh, who made this quick claim deed?
Oh, they're awful.
Who made this deed?
It's the law firm at the top.
Can't sign this.
Why not?
Dude, it says Mike Kaminsky, Dave Nolan, Justin, the selectmen of the town of Dunbar, who consider it should pay. So they're granting it to us, even though we're selectmen. It needs to be granted to the town of Dunbar, we just need to sign to this selectmen for the town representatives.
Well, that's the way they wrote it?
Yeah, that can't be signed, lean.
Okay, then I can, I can, I have this in Word, I can adjust it, but.
You shouldn't adjust it.
They've already.
They should provide that for us.
So where is it here, which one?
It's not us, it's the town of Dunbar.
Okay, the three names here.
Yeah.
Selecting the town of Dunbar, so right here, this quickly indeed is granting it to us three.
Okay, so this would be the town of Dunbar.
Good news, we'll turn around.
We're gonna charge by the tag.
Okay.
Alright, town of Dunbar, our names don't go here at all, as selectmen.
Sign it, we just sign it as authority.
And our titles should be under each name.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Uh, do we have a urgency on this one?
It's been.
Non usual, we can wait another couple of weeks.
Absolutely, yep.
Those two weeks won't hurt.
Yep.
Just the way that's worded, lean would be it.
That's a very good point, I had lost it.
After you get that uh rewritten, can we send it back to our attorney just for a quick check? But I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, but but you want to do that?
I just assigned plenty of deeds before and that's not.
Oh, I understand that, but this has already been approved in two thousand and nine, do you want?
It's okay, it's just the wording of the deed, lean, that our attorney should look at.
Okay, alright.
You know, just to make sure.
I just wanna make sure we have consensus there, Justin.
Yes.
Okay.
Have our attorney look at it.
Cause he may, he may say, I wanted the town of Dunbar Incorporated such and such, you know, he might want more legal than, I just know how that is.
Okay, well, for the record, we tabled, um, earlier we talked about it, but the uh. Gentleman who came in last week, uh talked about accepting roads that are partially completed, we would hold the bond and we allow COs on it. It's gotta have a public hearing, public hearing will be announced Monday, no later than Monday in the paper, and we'll have two weeks from uh. Monday will be, we'll have a public hearing and then sign.
Yeah, I'll move it to a Thursday, so we'll have a Thursday.
Okay, gentlemen, you understand that? And it was brought to our attention in two documents, in the RSA and also on our hard road to travel, and there was an oversight that we missed that.
Did you have um this electronically you can send to us?
Yep.
Okay.
But it's in there.
Just to give me some Thanksgiving reading.
Also send the RSA, I like, the RSA gave me more specific.
And just highlight the sections if you can that we're looking at.
Alright, uh, public comment.
I just have one quick thing, uh, the Department of Justice grant that I had, uh, I think I told the board about, we're gonna try and get some equipment and do physical security upgrades. Um, I'm gonna uh put in for equipment.
Could that be the roof?
I don't know.
Who can jump through the hole up there?
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna be putting in for uh equipment and I'm gonna try and identify another standard on the grant for physical security upgrades, just a little bit easier. On the grant side, so I'm gonna be submitting that tomorrow, we're gonna try and, try and get some uh tasers, replacement tasers and some ballistic shields.
What do you do with the old ones?
What's that?
What do you do with the old tapes?
Just use them for training.
Oh.
Yeah.
Use them for, if you don't notice, if you want, we'll keep on it every yes.
Try it out. Good to have.
I'd love to try it on you. Alright, um, I want you to speak to the grant master about that, make sure he's on board.
I sure will.
You know the.
I I I'm optimistic, they're doing twenty.
And for, for the, for the public, the chief from our is our grant master, he has pursued more grants for this, on behalf of this town.
Too much.
Uh, and he's been overwhelmingly successful, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
So.
Fingers crossed, we'll see.
Okay, exactly, so go forth and.
Sorry.
Go forth and gain more grants.
Sure will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, lean.
I have nothing right now, I I know I have a lot, but my brain is just.
Overall, you did a lot of work on the uh, both of you on the uh, on the ways, uh, we just gotta go to the next step. Finalize our proposals and then bring it to us, and then we can go from there.
Yeah.
Justin, to you.
Nothing today. Um, I met with the elevator people, started to install the elevator over there. And they brought something to my attention, they actually brought it to um, Chicoine's um project manager first. They said that um, once their installation is complete in another um, two, two and a half weeks, yeah. They said the, the biggest thing they're finding now in, in twenty twenty, the twenty nineteen. Um, code started being enforced and with the new code, they have to have audio visual, a dedicated phone line for the elevators. So that when people get stuck in them, they're not calling up, you know, the police department, this department, that department, so. They have a a means to um have the alarm company know who's supposed to be contacted and all that. Um, they said that, uh, they gave me a name of a control company that does the alarms, they also said BK Alarm is starting to become more familiar with it. The problem is, these alarm companies aren't that familiar with the new code, so after their uh elevator is done. The state won't sign off on the final inspection to it, because they don't have this alarm. Um, company set up and have a service contract with them, so. I'm gonna reach out if lean gives me the number to BK Alarm, cause they are the company that was just used to upgrade that alarm in there.
How about the one that monitors our alarms?
It's BK Alarm.
Is that what they're called now?
That's what they told me.
That was uh.
That was Pro Technologies.
Not our fire alarm though.
Yeah.
Are they?
Yep.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll check them to Pro Technologies.
Yeah, they're out of hooks.
Yeah.
Of three, everybody.
Very professional, very professional too, I thought.
I just talked to them last week for an issue we had and they were, they were great.
Yeah, so um. Um, I'll talk with the telephone company about getting a dedicated line just for that, um, and also. Um, we'll need to get set up for a contract for that, so that may be something out of our maintenance budget that could be used this year, or maybe it's next year, but. We need to get signed up for it, so that when that is done, it'll be usable, cause otherwise we'll have a nice finished building and we won't have that portion done.